All right, good evening and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. I would like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Vera?
Here.
Vice President Ifker?
Here.
President Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January seventh, two thousand and twenty five. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township firm and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meetings of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, January sixth, two thousand and twenty five, and January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing none.
Just congratulations to those who were elected by the people of West Orange in November and sworn in in January sixth. So congratulations to my board colleagues. Oh, I'm sorry. Congratulations to the board colleagues who were elected in the recent November election. That's my only comment, President Rock, with respect to the minutes from January sixth of two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our student liaison report from Nina Davis. Take it away.
Good evening. Last Friday, the West Orange Chinese Club hosted their annual Lunar New Year celebration in the Tarnoff Cafeteria. Festivities included student cultural performances, games, a student arts show, and crafts. A Chinese dinner was provided for guests along with a raffle at the end of the night. Last Saturday, West Orange hosted the nineteenth annual West Orange High School Color Guard Invitational, where over twenty-five color guards from all over the East Coast were able to participate and showcase their amazing talent. On January nineteenth, the AB Salute Boys Step Team were the winners of the eighteenth Annual Youth Step USA Brooklyn Borough Championship. So congratulations to them. To celebrate Black History Month, West Orange High School will be hosting a Black History Month dinner and celebration on February thirteenth. There will be local catering and festivities, including performances from the Boys and Girls Step Team, the Jubilee Choir, and the National Dance Honor Society. Tickets will soon be available for fifteen dollars each, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Nina. Next up, we have Mr. Moore. It is time for your report. Would you please share your superintendent's report with us at this time?
Thank you, President Rock. One of our initiatives, my first initiative last year, was to bring air conditioning to our elementary classrooms. So we've completed our first phase of updating electric, electric, the electrical in the buildings, and it has been completed in for Washington, Kelly, and St. Cloud. We will now begin to work on the electrical for Mount Pleasant, Gregory, Hazel, and Redwood. I will eventually call on our PTAs to rally behind a possible donation campaign so that we can, we may affect, we may help with the cost of effectively installing window units. Next, tonight, we welcome Robert Hague of Lurch, Vincy, and Bliss. They're an auditing firm, and they will be presenting the comprehensive fiscal report. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Board. Yeah, just a brief presentation tonight on your recently filed audit for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Each year, every district in the state has to have an audit, external audit, and file with the state and New Jersey Department of Education. What gets filed and what you have, what you receive from us is two books. One is a bigger book, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which has all of your financial statements, our audit opinions, related note disclosures. Then you get a smaller report from us, which is the Orders Management Report, which discusses the results of the audit. So just to give you some highlights, in the big report, you receive three opinions from us, audit opinions. You receive what we call an unmodified opinion for all three of those opinions, basically the highest level of assurance an auditor can give. So you have one opinion on your financial statements on whether they're prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Second opinion on your internal controls, which is more of looking at your processes and procedures, make sure there's no deficiencies in those internal controls. And then a third one is on your single audit, which relates to compliance with state and federal grant programs. So all three opinions, what we call our clean opinion, not a modified opinion. So very positive, positive result of the audit on that front. Just to touch on some of the financials, the district closed the year from a surplus standpoint, about three point eight million dollars over the state minimum, state maximum. So the state only allows you to keep around two percent of your budget as unassigned fund balance, which is really undesigned and assigned surplus. Anything over and above that goes back into your budget in the next cycle. So when your twenty-five, twenty-six budget, you'll have three point eight million dollars from savings from this budget to assist in that budget. And that's pretty consistent to where you were last year at this time. So from the June of twenty-three audit, you had about three point seven million dollars available for your twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So you're kind of on equal footing from where you were last year as far as a fund balance standpoint. So hopefully, when you start preparing this budget, at least you, you know, you're not in a shortfall to begin the budget process. You also have around total about five point two million dollars in the capital reserve fund. That's set aside for capital improvement purposes. Five million of that is being used in the current budget. So of the five point two, most of that is being used in the current, or actually was budgeted in the current year budget. Anything that's not used in this budget will revert back into capital reserve. So you had five point two million of which, like I said, five million is budgeted. So once this year closes, whatever's not spent, that'll increase that at two hundred thousand. And that's available for future budgets, or if the board, at board discretion during the year, you could do a resolution to withdraw that money for any capital improvement purposes. That's in your long-range facilities plan. You also have around two million dollars in a maintenance reserve fund. That's very similar to capital reserve, except it's for maintenance of your existing facilities. So it's not for, you know, major improvements or additions or alterations. It's really just for maintenance of your existing facilities. So something breaks, you could use that to fix it. You know, you need to replace some equipment, you can do that. So it's more of a, an ongoing maintenance rather than a long-term capital. So all in all, from, from a financial standpoint, you're, you're pretty even from where you were last year. For, for a district your size to kind of keep that fund balance even is, you know, pretty stable financially. You know, the only thing I would caution is, and this is not specific to West Orange, but, you know, you're using the money that you're saving from one year, you know, to assist with the budget in the next year. So that's a rolling process that, that you've been doing as, as most districts do. So you just want to keep your eye on that. So if that tends to increase, you know, substantially, you know, that could cause problems down the road, but you're not at that point yet. But just to caution, as you're using that fund balance every year, you want to kind of maintain that same level each year. And from a management report standpoint, we did have six recommendations, which I believe there's corrective action plan put in place that, that'll be implemented to address those findings. We reviewed those with the, with the business office. Of the six, none of them were what we call material or significant. They were all what we describe as general comments. So we start out at the general comment level, and if we deem it to be a significant deficiency in your internal controls, which caused that finding and recommendation, we would cause, uh, report that as a significant deficiency. Or if it's a material weakness that, you know, the finding caused a material weakness in your financial statements, we report that as such. But all six of these were what we call general comments, so pretty easily correctable, I think, if that corrective action plan is implemented, you know, that hopefully they would be corrected going forward. So all in all, very positive audit on, on the financial front and on, on the recommendations front. So happy to take any questions, if anybody has any questions on either of those reports.
Does the board have any questions?
One quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Were any of the findings in the notes different from the findings of last year?
Uh, yes, I think we had, there were six findings. Three of them did recur from last year. So three of them were new. Three of them occurred again from last year. So I think we, we talked about that. There were kind of problems that are corrective action isn't being implemented. It hasn't been fully implemented yet. So that's why you see those correct, you know, the same findings again. So from what we saw, it didn't look like, you know, nothing was done on those findings. It just looks like there needs to be continued improvement in those areas. But three of them were new ones. Three of them were, were repeats from the previous year.
You mean the three that are repeats for everybody?
Yeah, sure. The one was, there's a level of charity bond that the treasurer has to maintain. It's basically based on the size of your budget. The state gives us a calculation to say, based on the size of your budget, here's the minimum bond, charity bond that a treasurer has to maintain. That was below the max, the state minimum. That could be the result. I don't have the detail in front of me, but that, the, as your budget increases, the level of that charity bond has to increase. So potentially what could happen is we had that finding in last year's audit report. You were required to be at a certain level. You weren't last year, so we reported. Now this year, your budget went up again, so that minimum goes up again. So could have been just really a calculation standpoint where I believe your bond may have been increased from last year, but now because your budget increased again, it's required to go up again. So although it's a repeat, like I said, it's kind of a continued corrective action. Another one was just on, you have some rolling pension and payroll related issues that for employees that are enrolled in the pension and require like a retro pay for salaries. There's pension associated with those retro salaries that have to be remitted to the state. So on a normal payroll basis, you withhold pension from your employees. That gets remitted to the state as the payrolls occur. But when you have a retro that's owed for back pay, there's also pension associated with that. So what happens is there's a supplemental report that has to be filed for each quarter that that retro is associated. So what has to happen is that those quarterly reports have to be filed to make up for all of those individual quarters, and then that pension would be remitted to the state. So again, I think that might have been a case of it was different retros in different years. So it's just a matter of keeping on top of when those retros are paid to make sure those supplemental pension reports and payments get remitted to the state. And the third one had to do with a capital asset appraisal. Each year, we have to report in your audit, your value of all your capital assets, your buildings, your equipment, any machinery, and the related depreciation on that. So generally, what happens is districts hire a third-party company to come in and do an appraisal. They'll update that appraisal and depreciation each year. So last year and this year, we didn't get the report. Last year, I believe we got the report after the audit was issued. This year, I think they were still in the process of preparing the report. So that's just a recommendation to say, let's, you know, we need that report a little bit earlier because we need to report those numbers in the audit. So I think what happened last year is the audit has been extended because of various reasons at the state level. So I think some of the third-party companies have gotten used to those extensions. But now the state is kind of reverting back to the original audit deadlines, which are a little bit earlier than it has been. So I think it's just a matter of keeping on top of them to get you that report as early as possible.
Thank you. Sure. Any other questions? Mr. Moore, thank you. Thank you.
Just one more thing. At this time, I can present the harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports. Since our last board meeting, there have been eight investigations. I reviewed all the summaries of each of the investigations, and none of the incidents met the criteria of the H I B, and all were unfounded. I concur with the findings presented by our anti-bullying specialists. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for that report. Next up, do we have any committee reports or comments from the board?
Sure, I'll give a curriculum report. Just a quick update on the status of the math interventions that are happening specifically in grades six through eight. There were district-wide classroom visits in October of two thousand and twenty-four, and we have the results of those visits that make it clear about what we actually need to be working on in areas of focus for grades six through eight, also areas of support for our classroom teachers. What is encouraging is that we are focused on giving the students more of the cognitive load during the instructional time. We are focused on more opportunities for students to explain their learning and what they're understanding, and more opportunities for students to discuss their learning with other students. So that feels very encouraging. Our next steps in this process. This week, our kids, if you have kids in the system, are taking diagnostics in their subjects, and so we will have the results of those diagnostics soon. Those, those will be reported back to us. We will also have the results of classroom visits that will happen in February focused on the discuss-it portion of the classroom time. And we will have a report out to the curriculum committee that gives us progress on both math, sort of where we are, how things are going, as well as the E L A implementation that started this past fall. So excited to get those updates, and as soon as we have them, we will definitely share them here. That's it.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bryant.
Of course.
Anything from you, Mr. Stevenson?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Vera, anything? All right. Thank you for that committee report. Next up, I would like to share my board president's report with you all. Recently, one of our administrators was recognized by the West Orange Human Relations Commission and was bestowed the twenty-twenty-five educator Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Award. Roosevelt Middle School Principal Lionel Hush was selected for this recognition for his commitment to upholding the values of Dr. King through his exceptional service and dedication to making our schools more inclusive and more equitable. We salute Principal Hush and congratulate him on receiving this award. I also hear that our student liaison Nina Davis received an award there as well. So congratulations to you. That's all I have. Well, I'd also just like to say thank you for that report on the air conditioning. That is exciting to hear that we're moving forward with that. That's all I have. So next, we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, and then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comments?
Adam Kramer, Tony Moran Road, West Orange. I'm going to be commenting on some things I noticed from the audit report that are really policy questions that come from the audit report, not that there are any problem with the audit itself. The first thing I noticed is if you look at exhibit J four, in the fiscal year ending June thirty, you had total revenues of just over a quarter billion dollars. Two hundred fifty million, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and three, and three hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Your enrollment was seven thousand, eight hundred, eighty. So if you do the math, you had a revenue stream of thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and change per student. That figure is way more than double the national average. It is way more than the state average, and it's way more than the county average. My question is, with that much revenue, can we do things to help the taxpayer in terms of trimming the budget or making efficiencies so that the taxpayers get a break without adversely impacting education? Numbers like that, I think there is some room for that. Question, next question I had related to total indebtedness of the, of the town, county, and school board. Most people don't realize it, between our pro-rata share of, of the county debt, the school board debt, and the town debt, there's over a quarter billion dollars in local debt out there. Two hundred fifty-six thousand million and change. Works out to about twenty-one thousand dollars a household. What are we going to do to control the debt? Make sure we're using it wisely, paying it off, and getting the best possible interest rates, because that's not sustainable for the town. In fairness, most of the debt's with the municipality, not you. The next question relates to things, and I think this is where you need a better interplay between the school and the town. The exhibit clearly shows that the top ten property taxpayers in the town dropped from seven point eleven percent in two thousand and fifteen to five point four last year, meaning our commercial property base is shrinking. That means school tax falls more and more on homeowners. I'd like to know what you guys are doing with the town to make sure that they have land use policies, tax abatement policies that are not robbing your school revenues and then dumping it on the homeowner. Question four was about post-retirement.
Wrap it up in a sentence or so.
My last question relates to the four hundred thousand plus debt, bad debt that you have, and I want to know what's being done to collect it. It's mostly from school lunches. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Is there anybody else from the audience speaking on agenda items?
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Margarita Sainz Soto. I live in Borbreman Road, very close to Redwood. I have a daughter who is in kindergarten in Redwood School, and I'm glad to hear that the A C units are moving forward, but I wanted to ask a little bit more about what's the timeline that we're looking at? We're new in town, new homeowners, newish, and we had back-to-school night. It was the first time for us, and we were in my daughter's classroom. And we were adults. It was in the evening. It was September, and it was very hot. So I can't imagine for five-year-olds, six-year-olds to be learning in that environment, and I know that things are being done, but I just want to get an idea of, also from the parent side, like what we do to support that, because I'm just thinking, you know, when spring is coming and with climate change, as you want to call it, the temperatures are going to be all over the place. So that is my question. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment at this time? Or Mr. Moore, you'd like to touch on the air conditioning question?
No worries. In terms of the timeline, in, for Redwood, we had to, we have to upgrade the electrical in Redwood, which puts us back a little bit longer. So you're looking at Redwood for twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-six, in order to get that all online. Some of the, all the schools were, were not sufficient as far as electrical, it was concerned. So we had to upgrade every, which is very expensive, by the way, because we're bringing electricity into the schools. And it took us a little time to budget because, again, we didn't do a referendum or anything of that nature. We budgeted through our budget, and so we had to do it in phases. So the first three schools, as I mentioned, I believe, was, right now that everything has been updated, was Kelly, Washington, and St. Cloud. Next is Mount Pleasant, Redwood, Hazel, and Gregory. So we're, this year, we're looking to put air conditionings, air conditioning in on Washington, Kelly, and St. Cloud. With, and then the following, we're looking to put air conditioning in at Redwood. It's also, it does take a little time because we still have to have electrical. And I believe, Tanya, you can help me with this because I'm getting my information from vendors and buildings and grounds, but I believe there are some, in order to upgrade the electrical, there's things that transformers, and I might be saying this wrong, but okay, thanks, that need to be ordered, and there, and those take, we've already ordered them, but they take a year to get in. So it will be coming because it's already been ordered for them, but it, it, it will take us a little bit of time to get everything online.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you for the update. Just wondering if, if there is a way to have a temporary solution for this year for the schools that are not going to be, like, not going to have that? I mean, I, I know that there's a whole replacement, but...
Well, we do have some air conditioning in the schools. To get every classroom is, is very difficult. I can tell you that, like last year, we explored different things, putting people in rooms, trying to combine things of that. trying to combine things of that nature. But I can't answer if, we don't have anything planned to come in temporarily to do that. But I will say that, you know, we, we tend to see if things are getting, let's say escalating with heat and so forth. We would come up with a plan to try to help where we can. We've brought in portables. We've brought in fans. But I don't, I cannot commit to you at this point in time. And again, I would have to talk to buildings and grounds. But I, I cannot commit that there is a temporary plan that we have ready to go right now. Sorry.
We'll work with the school because I think the, the temperature was like a hundred and one at one point in a classroom. So that's really, I mean, there might be specific classrooms in the school. So I guess we can relay that to the principal of the school because.
No, when we've had those issues, we move people to share classroom spaces in which we have. But I, I meant if there was one temporarily that I have planned for right this moment, I don't. And, and, you know, I will, though, assess that. And we'll talk with your principal a little bit more, and we'll keep an eye. I can tell you that. All right.
Thank you. And with regards to Mr. Kramer's questions about the budget, just offered two thoughts. One, we are about to go into budget season. So we have preliminary meetings set up with the administration to, to meet with each of the board members separately. As we did last year, we will look for areas where we can save money. We implemented several cost savings last year, which helped balance our budget. We do have additional requests for staffing and professional development and things, you know, coming forward this year. And so we always have to balance what we need and what we want with what we can afford. And I'm sure that some of those things will have to get cut, and some of those things will be in the budget. But we will be mindful of the total budget and the impact on the taxpayers as we go through that process. And with regards to debt, as you mentioned, the majority of that debt is the town debt. In my time on the board, I don't believe we've issued any new major debt. I will say that when I was elected, there was conversations about debt. People were talking about a referendum. Heard Mr. Moore just mentioned that we avoided that for two major reasons. One is facilities, and the other is pre-K. So far, we've been able to expand pre-K without going out to a referendum. And we have some additional things planned for the short term that are going to increase the amount of pre-K space that we have without incurring new debt. And we've also been able to, thanks to the Capital Reserve, and thanks to state, state funding sources that pay for part of our capital improvements, managed to do that very expensive upgrade to electrical that'll enable us to do air conditioning, which is something the community has long been asking for without adding to our debt. So we are, as a board, mindful of that, doing the best that we can to provide the best education with the best facilities and the best staff at, at a level that is, you know, as affordable as it can be for a place like Essex County. So with that, did, all right, we'll, we'll take one more public comment then before we close.
I appreciate that. Thank you. My name is Katherine DeWalker. I'm from 59 Stanford. And I had a follow-up question just regarding, you were mentioning some of the temperatures in the classrooms and wanted to know, you may not have the information on hand now, but in terms of what safety protocols are in place, as you're considering, is there a certain temperature which, you know, would trigger something, let's say, if school needs to be released, released early or anything like that? I mean, especially when you're talking about like a hundred and one or so. So I wanted to know if you had any information to share on that.
Yeah. Because that's always in place. We always have a certain level of temperature, and we look at that, and when it's in place. If we can move the students to other rooms, we try to do that. Share spaces and things like that, we've done. But there, those plans are always in place. Too cold, too warm, things of that nature. We try to make moves and make sure everyone's safe. Safety's first for everything we do, so.
All right, moving on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items A1 through A4?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ivker. Want to congratulate the following retirees. Jennifer Marchesi, a special education teacher at St. Cloud Elementary for her 30 years of service. And Bruno Michik, a custodian on the night shift at West Orange High School for his 23 years of service. Thank you all for your service to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Is there any other discussion on personnel? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items B1 through B6?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ivker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, may I have a motion to approve the finance items? See, special services items A1 through 6, and business office items B1 through 12.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ivker. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rewind the clock for a second. Didn't we have a donation on the agenda there?
Yes, we did.
And who was that from again?
Donation we have from Ms. Vera. I'm sorry, one second.
My point was it was from Ms. Vera.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for your generous donation to our schools.
Yes, and there was one more. And Mr. David Mendy made a donation to Washington Elementary.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. And finally, may I have a motion to approve reports, item D1 through 3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Vera. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I forgot, there's one more item. May I have a motion to approve miscellaneous item E1?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Vera. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll. Mr. Stevenson?
The miscellaneous item is the approval of the academic calendar for '25, '26?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm sorry. Overlooked that. My apology.
No comments on it?
No comment.
Thank you. Any other comments on the calendar? All right, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Abstain.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, my board colleagues, for that. Next up, we will have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda items that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road, West Orange, New Jersey. I've lived in West Orange over 20 years, and I've been coming to board meetings for well over a decade and a half. I've lost five school board elections, and I've made some observations. And I think the biggest problem is that we don't have a culture of accountability in this school system. The math scores in ninth grade were horrendous. Nobody owns it. Nobody is the person responsible, and nobody's going to have really a letter of reprimand, a job loss. And conversely, which I think is the better way to solve it, nobody's going to get a bonus or promotion if they come up with great ideas and great work to fix it. Consistently, we are spending way more and taxing way more than pretty much every comparable jurisdiction in the state of, of New Jersey and the county of Essex and the nation. And when I ask, why are our cost structures so radically different? For example, why is it 20% more expensive to educate a child here than Caldwell, West Caldwell, six miles away? I really don't get an answer. It seems that nobody really owns the cost structure and fiscal accountability of this school. Nobody's going to get a bonus if they figure out how to save a lot of money. Nobody's going to lose a job if they sign bad contracts. And I think that therein lies the problem. So from my perspective, and I will say this, and people will give me lots of heat, but a lot of people agree with me that they're just not courageous to say it. We're in a school district that pays top dollar for education by any measure. By the measures of test scores, we're paying for mediocrity. I see this as untenable. And I see this all relates to, we have a system and a culture in this district that lacks accountability. Nobody owns problems. Nobody gets consequences for when they don't fix problems, and nobody gets rewards when they do. And I think that's the core problem as to why we have very expensive schools, but not necessarily very effective schools for everyone. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Alves. I'm at 20 Mayfair Drive. And I am a resident. I'm also a parent to two children here in the district. And I'm also an active member of the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. And as a community member, I have witnessed the fear the last few days of many of students, families, my neighbors, my residents, residents here in West Orange, who are fearing with the decision of the current administration on the rollback of a decade-old policy of prohibiting arrests pertaining to their immigration status at hospitals, churches, and schools. So with that being said, I present some questions that you may or may not have answers to. The first question I have is, does the front office of every school district, I'm sorry, of every school in the district know what a judicial search or arrest warrant looks like? Are all staff aware of the school premises, building access, and visitor policy? Are all staff aware of the FERPA regulations and state regulations in regard to sharing student information? Those are just some of the questions that I have. I know many of my residents, many of the neighbors fear to speak, so I speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think generally, we, we could say yes, and we have a plan in place, but perhaps, Mr. Moore?
Yeah. Within. Sure.
But if you want to make a general comment, you can do that, too. No, it's up to you. I'm just, if she has a list of questions, it's probably easier to talk to her one-on-one and answer them all.
Hi, Rochelle. I know very well. First, let's start with, this district is, you know, may have a lot of issues in which I, I can, let me acknowledge Mr. Kramer as we hear you. And, you know, it's my first year and a half, and I don't want a bonus, but I want to fix things and make sure that it gets better, and I don't need any more money for that. I think that we're going to do that because we all share, we like you, the love for the town. And we need your expression as, as, as we need all our town constituents to express themselves. So we get a great understanding and a better understanding on how we should go about our business. And of course, Rochelle, you are a terrific parent and a member of our school system, and you've worked very hard, and I, and I know you personally. And I'm, I'm happy that you came up and spoke for people, and that, that's respected and appreciated. One of the things I love about this town is people partnered up with us as a school district. These are unprecedented times. And we have no, you know, we're going into this new, into what is a challenge to a place like West Orange in which a beautiful multi-universe exists with a diversity of people. And that's a good thing. However, in terms of answering your question directly on, do people know the difference between an immigration warrant to a judicial warrant? Is the reason why we've partnered with West Orange PD to make sure that that is understood by anyone being approached or by any immigration agent? We would not, and I sent it out in a letter today, we would not let anyone take action, and we would protect the confidentiality of our students and families. And, but we do have to be lawful, and we understand that. We are not, you know, law enforcement and judicial warrants and so forth do require us to be lawful. But before we take any actions, we would have the assistance of West Orange PD to help us understand that. We also will have our attorney, who we've partnered up with and planned for our attorney to be present and aware during any, if that was to happen here at West Orange, and will also assist in that. Myself would have to be, and that's along with the New Jersey guidelines. I would be present to understand what that looks like and so forth. And of course, as far as like people walking through our buildings, going to, to things of that nature, we wouldn't allow that. We would make sure and have that contained as we would with any law enforcement agency. We would have that contained where we can work these things out lawfully and to get a clear understanding of what rights our students have in the moment and so forth. And then, of course, you know, we will be supportive in, in this way. Not everyone is trained in understanding immigration and so forth, but our teachers are trained in being empathetic and compassionate to people's fears and the fears of our families. And, you know, that we can definitely do and support our families while we are in some unprecedented times and not sure how things are working or going to work going forward. But we're prepared to support our students and families because they're what's important to us. We are not law enforcement agents, agents, so we won't act as such. We are citizens like everyone else, but we do prioritize protecting our community and protecting our kids and so forth. But we are not also, we also aren't going to obstruct, we cannot obstruct or be unlawful. So we would work with people on our side, such as board attorneys and West Orange PD, to really understand the situation before anyone or if anyone can take action. So, you know, I hope that answered a little bit of you. Is that all right? All right. I hope that answered some of your questions. So the approach we're taking.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Our next board meeting for the purposes of real. There goes a typo there. Our next regular board meeting. Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's someone else for public comment.
My name is Pamela Beardsley, and I resided for Adesonia Terrace. So I made a post today in the Moms Group just because I felt it was important for our community to have full transparency. And with a lot that's been going on right now, I just wanted to share a little bit of my story and let people know that what's going on right now is, is real. As a mother who has experienced family separation firsthand due to immigration law, I want to sincerely say thank you to our community who is showing support and solidarity regarding most recent events that have been happening with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. My husband and I went through due process and waited 10 years for the chance at legal residency for him. We were called one day and notified by our immigration lawyer that we had three weeks to figure out our lives because my husband needed to leave the country. We had two children at the time. We had a life here. We owned a house. We paid taxes. Informed our children's teachers that we may only have a little longer with them and said goodbyes to family at Thanksgiving because we weren't sure when we'd see them again. I just wanted to share because not everyone thinks that this could happen to their neighbor, their child's best friend, their coworker. There are many people who have been in line and are trying to do the right thing that unfortunately. that unfortunately will get swept up in the masses. Many community members of West Orange are concerned for our children right now. Some questions that I have for you, which you may respond to now or via email, are students' emergency contact and school pickup information up to date? Have protocols related to school discipline and truancy been reviewed to minimize student encounters with law enforcement and the judicial system? Thank you.
Okay, I can answer, actually, some of that. First, thank you for sharing, and I know that's not easy, so I acknowledge that that's not easy to do, and I appreciate you sharing. And thank you for sharing, as that might help some of our families as well. Yes, one of the first, so we met on Thursday with our attorneys, West Orange PD, all the principals and leadership, and we talked about the very things you're talking about, emergency contacts, making sure that that was all in line, and people were starting, were working on that to make sure that that's still in line. So we definitely were doing, doing that, that's already been done. Your second question was, I'm sorry, can you just say that second part for us? For me? Yes. So that's not much different than what we do for absences, because there are many reasons for us to be engaged in student absences. I know immigration's a topic today, but we also remember agencies that protect kids from abusive situations, and, you know, sometimes mental situations or emotional situations. So I know that those automated calls are annoying, but they also trigger our offices to follow up and to tally if they don't see a student for X amount of time. And sometimes parents are a little offended by us calling and saying, well, we haven't seen them, where are they? And what room? Or we do send out, and I know people are gonna, some parents have experienced this, we send out what we call safety checks to figure out where, if, why a student's absent. And a lot of times, students are sick at home, but we do do that. So, yeah, those things are still done, but we did do the first thing you mentioned. We started looking at all the contacts to make sure we have that in line. So, you're welcome, I was able to answer that, so thank you.
All right, last call for public comment. All right, so I didn't mean to cut you off, and thank you for sharing your story. Thank you very much for everyone. Our next board meeting, the regular board meeting, will be on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty PM here at West Orange High School in the Library Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed, and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all for joining us tonight, our meeting is now adjourned, we wish you a good night.